There we go. So we will post the link on the town website for folks to join later. Ask that folks that are not involved in the discussions to please hide your video so that's when the recording is done. It's easier to follow if we've limit the number of screens there. Just wanted to say thank you too for sticking with us through the virtual, uh, virtual slog. We have some audio visual improvements that are happening at the town hall. So shouldn't be a problem moving forward, but thank you. In any case, if for some reason we get interrupted in a way that doesn't allow us to continue on with the conversation, we will end the meeting. I'll send out a new link through an email blast to the town and we can start back up against the council can continue their business. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Council President, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Matt and Mr. Mayor. Let's see. Okay, so um, we got a pretty full agenda. Thank you all for joining. First item is beekeeping. Can you give us an update on the job description and the options that you've developed for us, Matt?
Sure. So um, in essence, there's, we have kind of three options and they're, they're different tiers of how, how we would want to handle it. On the one, on the, on the one end of the spectrum, we have Elizabeth Harris, who is somebody who has lived in Somerset, was identified by the environment committee as somebody who might be interested in this project and would be appointed to this position and be under the town's insurance policy as an appointed official with the town is the town beekeeper. Elizabeth is offering to maintain a couple of beehives and the locate, the locations are the same for all in, uh, in all, all three proposals. Elizabeth is offering to maintain a couple of beehives in the park area there. The town would be responsible for signage. So with her, we would, we, we would have to work out further details about if, if it's possible to get honey, probably have to buy the materials for that, et cetera. But she's offering her beekeeping services free of charge. Um, in the middle is somebody who was recommended by the Montgomery County Beekeepers Association. And so he has a side business essentially that he does for various people and groups throughout Montgomery County. Um, he uh, is uh, essentially he will maintain the bees for $2,500 for a calendar year. And then any add-ons that we wanted to do, like the honey, for example, we, we would, we would purchase all the, all the equipment to jar the honey and things like that. And then determine it later. Then the third and final proposal was from a company called Alveo. I hope I'm pronouncing that right. That would offer professional bee maintenance services for about $8,500 a year. They would maintain the beehive in town. They have various signage that they would put up. Um, at least one town exercise that they would put on, whether it's for residents or for the school, or if we wanted to do both. Um, and provide 100 jars of honey for the town branded Town of Somerset honey. So I included the three proposals. It's sort of a matter of whether we want, how much we would want to spend, if anything on it and what level of professionalism we would want to invest in, in the project.
Yeah. Thank you very much for that summary of the options, Matt. Uh, before we go around, can you just clarify for us uh, what the environment committee's recommendation is? Is it still Elizabeth?
Yeah, thank you. So, so the, um, I don't, the environment committee hasn't met as a whole in time to review them, but I have had discussions with the chair, Bart Rubenstein. And Bart's recommendation was to just go with Elizabeth for this year. Um, I think I noted, I, I sort of copied what, what he had said and a follow-up to me. Keeps, keeps the activity within the neighborhood, somebody that we know. And um, he, he liked the idea of it being less of a business. So he, he's in favor of, um, of just going with Elizabeth Harris.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's just go around the virtual room. Robin?
Yeah, I was blown away by the proposal. I mean, they are professionals. It's true. Um, but uh, uh, the hundred jars of honey is a nice touch, but the, the more important thing is that they're also going to include a, what's called a bee hotel, which you know, is a lovely idea, but it's, it's actually for native bees. Because honeybees are not native bees that are Italian honeybees usually. And so the, the bee hotel would be helping to sustain native bee populations. And their idea of community events is that they teach people what you can do to help pollination at the same time, so that um, more bees can, can, can happen in town. All in all, it, it's, it's, I, I very much like the proposal and all that stuff they're doing for, I think it was only a little over $8,000. So that it? Yeah.
Yeah.
So I was going, um, we could have a very nice, uh, project there for not very much money.
I think you, you muted yourself, Steve, so I can see her.
Um, I heard some background noise earlier. So, okay. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Appreciate that. That, that assessment and I'd mark you down as in favor of the upper tier option, which is still not, as you noted, not very expensive.
Right.
Debbie, do you have some comments, thoughts?
Oh, you're muted.
Hi, sorry. I do. Um, Robin, it was, you'll excuse me, but I didn't hear you when you said what the cost was for, from, from Elizabeth Harris. I think you said it was for Elizabeth Harris.
What I was talking about was that, no, the professional one, that's Alveo.
Oh, okay.
The cost is a little over $8,000, which we can handle honestly. Um, and uh, they're doing a whole lot more than Elizabeth Harris.
So was your recommendation to go with, with the company or with, with Elizabeth?
Uh, my recommendation is go with the company. We're, we're really getting a lot out of them and including a community event for the town or for the school. So it really is quite a lot.
Okay, then, thank you. Um, I didn't quite understand. Um, but my questions are then, um, why, if we went with Elizabeth, what would that do in terms of our, not only our own costs, but our town maintenance people? Obviously they would be the people that would have to do whatever has to be done. How much more are we giving them?
Well, for the most part, I think she, you know, she has experience doing um, backyard apiaries for, for people at their homes. So I think this would be a little bit of, a little bit different, but not fundamentally different. Um, you know, we maintain that area around the hives anyway. So I don't, I don't think it would be a whole lot of added burden um, to, to the town staff. Um, I think the, the, the bigger thing would be uh, as council member Barr had suggested, if we were good to go with Alveo, uh, Alveo, um, excuse me. Um, it would be more of a benefit of the extra things that they would provide. So they would provide the signage for us. So we wouldn't be responsible for signage. They, they have um, various uh, workshops and presentations that, that they've done. They, they have uh, at least one.
I read, I read.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry. So I did, I did read the proposal. Yeah.
The, to answer your question, I don't think it'll be an added burden to the staff. Um, other, other than, as I said, maybe making signage or ordering signage, things like that.
So then can you tell us about Elizabeth Harris? I don't know her. Um, it would she be, do you think she'd be responsible to keep this going? Would it become our burden or what?
I, I do think that that's one of the benefits of going with one of the professional outfits is to, to be able to kind of hand it over and know that they've had the experience of, of working in a professional way like that. Um, that being said, you know, I, I've, I've spoken with her. I think she's, she's a very nice person. I think that she's knowledgeable about bees. I'm sure she's, you know, she's very, she's capable of doing.
Does she not live here anymore?
She doesn't live here.
Okay. So I just want to interrupt for one second. So I do think that uh, as has been our, our preferred policy that uh, if you decide on either of these, that if, when you put it on the agenda, that you have the vendor there that night. So you have a lot of options. You could decide that you want to interview each of the vendors at a, at an open forum like this, or you could decide you want to uh, go with the recommended one, have it on the agenda. And as we like to do is have the vendor come. So it isn't a fait accompli. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
I guess.
I just want to throw that out there if, if that's what you all want to do.
Are we talking about what we think now or just asking?
No, I'm saying, but all I'm saying is that it's hard for Matt to answer some of these questions because he might know the answer. And that's why we always.
I understand.
We decided some years ago that, that before a final decision is made, that you have the, the vendor present.
I, I understand. I get it, Jeffrey. I just, um, I was just wondering why we wouldn't go with Elizabeth Harris, you know?
Well, that's, that's for you all to, that, that's for, yeah.
I'm done.
I just wanted to make sure. I'm saying that your questions are completely appropriate, but, but we couldn't necessarily expect Matt to answer them.
Okay, I understand.
And that we have the option of asking them, you have the option of asking them to the vendor whenever you would like.
I understand. No gun in Matt's back, just gonna take what he might know, you know?
Right, right. That's good. It's good to ask them. I just wanted to bring that up. Okay, I'm sorry for interrupting.
I think that's good. And emphasizes that we're not making, taking the vote tonight. We're just trying to lay the groundwork, maybe answer a few questions.
Okay.
Uh, Shannon, do you have any thoughts or comments to add, questions?
Sorry, mute. Um, no, I, my only thing was I thought that, um, the whole, I thought that we were originally looking at Elizabeth Harris because we knew that she was offering her services free of charge and, um, we didn't really have a, a specific budget for this already. Is that not the case?
So originally we, we were looking at, yeah, just a vol, a volunteer beekeeping service. And I think that's what the, that's, you know, that's why, uh, Chair Rubenstein, um, probably recommend, you know, his preference was to go with Elizabeth Harris. In our discussions, we had talked about, well, even, even if that's not the case, it might be good to get a variety of options out there, whether it's just several volunteers that want to do it, et cetera, and.
So do we have money in the budget for it this?
We, we do. We budgeted, um, some money for project manage, for, for just supplemental project management this year. So we have, we have the funds that we wouldn't need to amend the budget.
And that would continue until next year as well?
We would, we would, i- if we were to go with either, you know, either of the two options that ended up costing money, we would sign a contract with them. Um, and, um, you know, and then have, have that be part of our discussion for the budget next year. So we, they, they would maintain bees. They would install them in March, maintain them through the spring, the summer, the fall. And then, you know, we, we could either decide to end it or, um, continue it from there.
Okay. Cause I think that like, at least the people that I spoke to, um, in town, you know, were, thought that it wasn't really going to cost, you know, the town any money. Um, and so I think that we just have to keep that in consideration. Um, you know, if that's the messaging that we put out, um, that if that changes and it actually does cost, you know, town money in order to do this. Um, you know, I don't know what people were in town would think or not think, but the understanding that I got from a lot of people was that, you know, they were fine with it because it didn't cost the town any money.
Yeah, um, yes. Uh, I, I think that depending on what we ended up doing, there would be some costs associated with it, no matter what. Uh, for instance, if we, we had talked about selling honey, um, so you know, if that's something we wanted to do, we would need to pay for the materials for that. But certainly I, I would think that the Alveo, uh, one is probably what costs the most money, although they are, the two that cost money, part of the reason they cost money is because they do carry their own insurance too.
Yeah, yeah. Good point. Yeah. Okay. I've no, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh,
Can you hear me, Steve?
Oh, sorry. Kabir. Yes, please. Please. Ah, am I muted? I'm not muted. Okay. Go ahead, Kabir.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I walked to the town hall and, and just quickly walked back and then realized we were doing Zoom call. Um, I think there are two questions here. One was the cost question that Shannon raised. Then the other question was the risk and the, you know, the sort of who holds the insurance, how does indemnity work? And I felt that
We might have lost you, uh, council member.
Mid-sentence.
You had, you had set it up beautifully.
Last.
Yeah, we, we lost you at, uh, uh, that you, you said the two things to consider and then you thought, and then it trailed off.
Oh, sorry. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Back in the house. So two things were cost and the risk and you know, how indemnity works, right? Last time when we discussed this. And I think we got stumped on the second piece, if I'm not mistaken. And so you know, would be good to get sort of a historical refresher here because we keep coming back and it's, you know, I don't know whether we are advancing. It's not clear in my mind. I'm hoping we're advancing, but it's not clear in my mind. So one was cost and the other was indemnity. And on the cost side, I think definitely we want, you know, it to be as affordable, reasonably priced, right? Like we want to save money for town, whatever we do. And I'm thinking sensibly about that. Uh, and I think Elizabeth Harris is a volunteer. She's actually on Drummond, so just past the school. I think that's where our house is. You can even see her backyard uh, set up from the road from the walk, uh, pathway. But then there's a question of insurance and indemnifying and the risk, which remains unanswered. So I don't know whether the information presented right now, at least I don't feel equipped to decide either way. So I don't know, Steve, if you feel this is kind of, we're getting the right information here to make the next call. Because I feel like every six, seven months we come back and it feels wobbly and fuzzy. It would be nice to have, like for the other things we are spending on that are on the docket today. The clear kind of proposals and ideas, it still feels a little unclear to me in which direction to go.
Okay, um, well, the options are new, but I, so first off, thank you very much, Kabir. The options are new. Because we're maturing our procurement policy, our procurement practices. When this, this all started, the environment committee had an inspiration. They did some informal reach out and they identified a volunteer. There are some issues with that volunteer and then we, we got another volunteer. We got Elizabeth. And we have sorted out insurance issues. Ron can weigh in if, if we need to, but I believe that uh, as Matt said, the volunteer would become a member of, a volunteer member of the town staff and be covered by the town's insurance policy. But we now have these additional options that Matt identified through the, in, in open solicitation and engagement with the municipal league. So we might decide, even though we started out with the recommendation from the environment committee, that it would be more desirable for the town to have a professional beekeeper of one sort or another, providing the services and providing different layers of services. So we don't need to sign now. Why don't I just get quick call from Ron? Am I correct about the insurance for the volunteer?
Yes. Yeah, that's right. Matt had a discussion with Legit and Legit confirmed that we'd have to appoint that person as a town official in order them to be covered by our officials' policy. And a, a separate endorsement or separate policy didn't seem practical.
Okay, um, so I'll let everybody think on that. I'll try and summarize comments in my notes of this meeting and um, then I'll work with Matt on on lining up the, um, the vendors. We might want to have multiple vendors to answer our questions at the council meeting.
And then at the same meeting, Steve, we will be boarding on a budget amendment?
No budget amendment required, according to the town manager.
I just heard from the town manager that there's money, but a budget amendment is required.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we have, we have money in our budget for, uh, essentially supplemental project management. And so we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to do a budget amendment for it. Um, but the council would need to approve the expense.
Right. Thank you, Matt. Okay. Great discussion, but we're behind schedule. Matt, can you, uh, walk us through the roadway master plan RFP?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to, uh, try to be quick. Um, we, you might recall that we, we had a little bit of trouble attracting a lot of firms. And so, um, what we ended up doing is following up and actively soliciting, um, proposals from several companies, um, that are around here. Um, I got back three proposals, um, from three different engineering firms. I had conversations with representatives from all three of them. Two of them are, are, are kind of in line with one another. Um, and then one was significantly more expensive. And I think in going through the proposals, I didn't feel that the one that was much more expensive, um, in essence was, was worth the extra expense. And so between the other two, I, I thought that they were both good options. Um, I, I leaned towards Dewberry, um, in part because I liked in my discussions and in their proposal, um, some of the options relating to, um, the computer programming and graphical interface, uh, systems that they have that can help us map out what we're doing and also plan it long-term. And I think that it also has some potential if we get that started on a ground level to help with planning for other types of projects, including stormwater. Uh, we can map where, um, different public utilities are sewer lines, water lines, gas lines, et cetera, um, as well as signage, streetlights, things like that. Um, and so I, I liked, I like that capability from them. Um, but I, but I did feel that either of those two um, seed or Dewberry, um, seemed like good options. I liked my conversations with them and they were both excited about working with the town.
Great. Thanks for that summary, um, Matt. And, and thanks for orchestrating this effort. I know this has been, uh, this has taken quite a few months of, of hard work to pull together a solicitation and, and, and get these, uh, responses. I, I like your recommendation. Um, and I'll just go around the virtual room and see if other folks have questions or comments. Robin?
Yeah, um, I'm not going to say no to your recommendation, but I will point out that, um, Renova is doing, um, two methodologies to look underneath our roads. One is a radar system. Um, and the other is drilling down and taking samples. And if you look at the pricing of those two and add them, they are the difference in their costs from Dewberry. So, and I, Dewberry is not doing that. So in fact, in terms of matching them in terms of, um, for the same activities, they are the same price, but Renova is doing these extra things. The question is, if you think those extra things really aren't of much value to us, then there's no problem. But it's, it's just to draw your attention that they are doing those extra things.
Yeah, uh, uh, that was something that came up, um, in part, I think they, they were focusing on in, in my conversations with them, I had mentioned on Cumberland Avenue. Um, just looking at that compared to Drummond, that we may, we may have a situation where the streets are actually concrete underneath the pavement. And so they, they, they kind of focused a lot on that and looked at, as you said, different methodologies that could be used um, to give us a report on that because that will have an effect on when we do the repairs themselves. It requires different equipment to mill the street if there is pavement underneath. But in talking to all three of them, I, I felt like a, all of them were aware of this and had that essentially, uh, essentially it was overkill, um, to me, um, to, to need to do both.
All right. I appreciate the question, Robin. Thank you, Matt. Let's just go around the virtual room. Debbie?
Um, I, I guess, I, I read through their proposals. It was a little heady, but I didn't know what a GIS is.
Sure. Uh, GIS stands for Graphic Interface System, I think. And, um, it's essentially mapping software. Um, so it's, they collect physical data and it, they could create a map of the Town of Somerset using that data, publicly available data that shows, you know, we could, we could, we could input whatever we wanted essentially into there. Like I said, and you know, we can have the road information there that it shows when the roads were last done, what the, you know, if we had A, B, C, D, E rating on the roads, you know, we could do that and plug in an algorithm that over time it changes in there. Um, you know, we, we could have the front setbacks of houses on there if we wanted. So we can expand it to be whatever we want. And that was kind of what I thought was exciting about it is that it gets us started on that. And then we can look and see if it's useful for this and if it might be useful for other types of, um, other types of projects, other types of, um, infrastructure down the line.
All right. Thank you. I just couldn't figure out what it was. But, um, no, other than that was my only real question. Thank you.
Hey, thank, thank you, Debbie. Shannon?
You're muted.
You muted, Shannon.
Sorry. What? Can you go to Kabir first?
I was muted. Kabir, can you step in? Do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, you know, first of all, GIS is geographic information system, just to be clear. I think a well-established methodology for mapping topographic areas and things like that. Topographic areas and things like that, so. I think that, you know, first Matt, I I appreciate um. Steve's calling out that this has taken some effort, so don't want to stand in your way in any way and hopefully. And and fully support whatever you're thinking in the direction you're going. Um. I just wondered, a few things stood out to me on Dewberry. One is, it didn't, it looked like they hadn't done a lot of state local government. Uh, work except in the district. Maybe they've done some, so I don't know if that was a concern for you because, you know, it's. Different ticket sizes, different project management methodologies. I don't know if you see that as a risk, uh, even on their website. That's a call out. Have, I don't know if you have had a chance to talk to both the two references in the proposal and one in the summary letter. The cover letter they had, they were different, actually. Um, I think, you know, if you have, and I recommend you do that anyway, even if you're going in that direction, just to get a sense of what it would mean to project management that. And then should we, it looks like um. The renovation one was three to five months, if I'm not mistaken, Renova. And here it's twenty weeks on on Dewberry. Is what they're assuming so five months. And and so just, you know. Not to get ahead of ourselves, but. Collectively, as town government, I think we do anticipate delays. All of these projects have always ended up. Taking more time, so just to. Give us a clear sense of that timeline and all of us have real expectations there on that front. Um, but this is, this is overall, overall good news that we have solid proposals and. Technical teams, and so appreciate you taking this forward.
I haven't been able to follow up on all. I I had called one of their references, but I hadn't followed up on all of them yet. So that's a good point and it might be worth doing. I did talk to them directly about um the their experience and managing more. The scope just being much larger than what it is here. They, they had essentially said they were excited about that because they were looking to expand what they were doing into more municipal. And county work, and so. They saw this as a good um avenue to, to. To to get into that line. And so I felt, I felt like. It was that reflected well that they have every incentive to to do the job well and to work with us because we would. We would be an important reference for them if if that is indeed something that they want to continue to. Pursue.
Thank you for that update. Matt. And if we do proceed. Um, wi- with this option, I think that just closing with some of the other references. Will be desirable. I think it's a great suggestion from Kabir. Kabir, if you don't, do you have any other questions, comments? Otherwise, we'll go to Shannon.
We'll go to Shannon.
Okay, thank you very much for stepping in.
Um, okay, well, I I'm used to the alphabetical. I'm used to being last. Um, so uh, I agree as far as like the the references. And I also agree in terms of, you know, I mean, if there is a company that wants to, you know, break into this more and kind of see. You know, and we and we can be, you know, a. Test for them as long as they have the staff in place in order to do it and that that stuff won't fall through the cracks and they have good references. I think that that would be a great opportunity. You know, for them and for us as well. So I don't really have any questions, I guess.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, then I think that moves us on to the next item. Sorry, I'm. Trying to find the stuff. Okay, uh, stormwater management. Can you have some update on that?
Sure, so um. I won't get into the background of what the project is. I think. We know what it is, but I'm happy to if somebody needs a refresher or would like a refresher, but. Um, in essence, we, we were hoping to get three bids. Um, one of the companies that we reached out to. Um, didn't end up responding to it. Um, I tried following up with them, but at a certain point it felt like. If they were truly interested, they would have put in the effort. Um, but that being said, I think, I think we have two uh. Pretty decent proposals. One is from um. LIDC who who we know who did. Um, the work with the Stormwater Study Committee. And the other from a company called um Bayland. I. Uh, I shared the proposals with um. Ellen Globakar, who was the chair of the Stormwater Study Committee and Julie Greenberg, who. Was also a member of the committee, um, very knowledgeable on the subject. And is actually here joining us. Uh, so welcome, Julie. Um. I think that in general, um, you know, they had similar thoughts in that we had two, two decent proposals to choose from. Um, I did include some comments that they had sent. One was um, you know, two con- two concerns about Baylands that they felt. Um. That their, their email was in response because I I had sent them and said, you know, I I've been reviewing them and I'm. I'm sort of leaning towards Bayland here. Let me know what you think. And they had brought up. The two concerns, one was. That Baylands uh, the length of the project was a little bit longer. And the other um. Um, the way that they had proposed collaborating with. Individual residents. Um, just wanted to make sure that that was. Um, a a high priority and. The importance was recognized um in the project. I. I felt. Overall, that. The, the affordability factor was very important for Baylands. I um. I also thought that they had practical experience in stormwater management projects. Um, more than LIDC who. We were one of their references that they sent to us. Um. It's Tacoma Park was the other one, and I know Tacoma Park does, does speak highly of them, which is how we found them in the first place for. The first project. Um, but I felt that when I reviewed the projects ultimately that. Even asking LIDC, you know, how can you make your proposal more affordable? Didn't necessarily serve the town well because I I already thought that. Bayland's proposal was just as good, so I didn't. I didn't feel that. Scaling back. What? LIDC was offering. To bring them in line money-wise would be worth the bang for the buck, so to speak. Um, so I I'm recommending Baylands, um, but I also know that there's value in. Continuing uh established relationships with. With vendors. Um. So. It's not, you know, it's not an overwhelming, and I'm not banging the table for them, so to speak, but um. You know, if I was leaning one way, that's, that's kind of where I was leaning.
Thank you, Matt. Um. Just, this is another example of these longer projects that you you're. Bringing to the table now. Really appreciate it.
Well, and 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 thank you as well to um Julie and Ellen especially who have also helped a lot uh behind the scenes to.
Right, well. And I appreciate Julie Nolan. Reviewing the proposals and their comments. I thought their comments about. In particular, Bayland's engagement with residents is. Is important to consider that that. At least in the proposal, Bayland seemed to be coming off as a little more. Hands-off. Um, as opposed to really engaging with the residents. And I didn't know if Matt, if if you think that's something that we can address in talking with them. Is that just because that's the way they're used to working? Or you think they actually have a um. Uh, they they would resist that type of engagement with residents?
I don't get the sense that they would resist it. I think that the reason they had written it that way is to, is because they were taking a more. Um, sort of prescriptive approach to it. To. Try to. Look at it with a fresh set of eyes and without sort of a a bias looking in and say, these are what we. These are what we recognize as problems and potential problems. And then coming and sharing those uh that with with the community and getting feedback from there. But I I don't get the sense that, you know, they're resistant to modifying the way we, the way we stack meetings or anything like that.
Okay, thank you very much, Matt. I'll just go around the virtual table again. Robin?
Actually, I'm gonna defer to the others this time.
Okay.
We can go backwards.
We'll go backwards. Let Shannon go first. There we go.
So. I agree. I think that the Bayland proposal. Um, is certainly. A lot more cost efficient. Um. And I think that, you know, I mean, part of this, LIDC. You know, is. Knows our town, knows what we've spent, you know, has the survey results of all the people who've spent so much money on. On these solutions and, you know, they, they know a lot more, whereas this Bayland seems to really have done a lot in other areas. And outside of Montgomery County, which I see as a benefit. And so. I think that it helps to provide like a little bit more like a wider context and um I think that I. I mean, you know. I I don't, I I only just read through this and stuff, but to me, I think that the Bayland um proposal. Um. Seems like a. You know, perhaps a better option. I guess I don't have any questions. Sorry.
Fine. We're also just sort of discussing, so appreciate your point of view. We'll go to Kabir in the reverse order, continuing.
Um, tha- thanks again, Matt, on 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 the work here. So we are looking at. Twenty-six K versus forty-six K roughly.
Yeah, yeah.
I think on Bayland, um, I I thought both proposals were good. Frankly, uh, I think, and I mean, if we can get. What we want with less. Expenditure, I think that was the thinking behind your. Recommendation. I think that makes sense to me in agreement with the Shannon. I do think that Ellen and Julie raise an important point about how this gets managed. Overall, you know, so the first question that comes to my mind is the fourteen households. Are they? If, I don't know if you can remind me, Matt or Robin or. Someone else like, have we, do they know this is coming? This is in the works? Are they engaged? Is there some? Like when we do a construction, you know, we get our neighbors to sign off, like, should we do something where? They they kind of declare that they are. Willing to take the next step here. And I don't want to say that we should do that. I'm not trying to. Before someone starts emailing me, I just want to say that I'm not. Proposing any barriers. I just want to just kind of understand whether the households are are engaged.
That they, they, as I understand it, they are all engaged. Julie's on the line and maybe she can confirm that perhaps.
Yeah, so it's something along those. I think that's the underlying kind of thinking in the. Feedback on Bayland is like, how does this get project managed? And what is? The council's role, the town hall's role, and frankly, a committee that has been disbanded. Role. You know, and so I think we. You know, is is sort of, tho- those are pieces I think we need to resolve. Um, I'm assuming, Matt, you will be involved. Town Hall will be involved. And. So how do we project manage that? I think it's very, very critical. In this process. And then the other piece there is really widely communicating on this project. I think there was a lot of misinformation, misunderstanding, confusion in the budget process last year. I think we need to really communicate very clearly what this is, what's happening. How does this, where does it go from here? How is, you know, we really, all of us, frankly. Need to do that so people don't feel like this is, this is money funnel, even if it's thirty K. Into some prod pet pet initiative. You know, and then lastly, I'm just glad this is moving forward. Uh, you know, overall, I think this is, it's glad that there is action on what I thought was a very creative. Thinking on Ellen's part. And I think it's worth testing out for sure. I see Julie unmuted. I I'm, I don't know, Jeffrey permits us for residents to participate in working session?
It's only if the uh. Counsel has a question for somebody. It's not a time.
Yes. Yes, just the question of household engagement.
If you have a question of her, it's fine, but not for testimony.
Yes, so to Robin's uh question, invitation, Julie, you know, what the, sort of where does, where do things stand with the fourteen households on this?
Um, thanks for the question. I I think it's a really important one, and I'm happy to say that. All fourteen households that are in this micro watershed. Um, were contacted. About. Site visits. With Neil Weinstein that took. Place. Uh, in July, and only one. Of the households contacted. Indicated that they preferred not to have. Any site visit. And in the other cases, people were happy to have the site visit. And in. Many cases, we arranged the site visit at a time when the household, someone from the household could be present. There was a second point of contact recently, more recently, when Matt put in the town journal. A little post about this RFP being put out. And because I didn't know how many people. Read every last paragraph in the town journal. I um emailed to all the households. Uh, for whom I had an email to tell them about the post. And for anybody who didn't, I. Um, just made a hard copy. Of the information and dropped it off at their house. So they knew that this um was in the works. And I, uh, so at this point, we, you know, we will, we've. I think, you know. They they know something is going on in the um background. And then I would also just mention that Ellen has been working closely with one of the households. Because they have a very, very immediate problem. And um. They're very invested in in sort of what I, what's going on on their property and and. Throughout the micro watershed.
Thank you, Julie. So uh, my quick recommendation, you don't have to follow it, Matt, would be you may want to do a. Kind of a first step. Yeah, against the, against this backdrop or reach out and just say this is moving forward. You know, and and just make sure you give people the opportunity. I'm sure they'll be still challenged.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kabir. Uh, Debbie?
Um, my questions, you know, a couple of things. I I read both proposals. And I, and I did wonder about, you know, the community and engagement, you know, from um. From, from the other company, not not from Neil Weinstein's company. Um. And I think that that community engagement is probably really important. Um, but my my question is in terms of. Project managing this. You know, uh, Kabir said that the committee is virtually not there anymore, but it sounds like. Julian and um Ellen are still working. Um, so thank you, Julie and Ellen. Um, even though you're not official anymore, keep it up. Um, but so who is going to to project manage this group? Is that you, Matt?
Well, part of, part of what we had set out in the RFP is to um establish a new committee that would. Would help on this specific project as well, so. Um. You know, we still have some touch points, um, especially with Ellen and Julie right now. Um, but the idea is to. Um, may not, it 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 won't be the same. It 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 doesn't have the same charge as as the Stormwater Study Committee do- uh, did rather. Um, but the idea is that we have kind of a new next step iteration of. Like-minded, uh, not like-minded, but similarly interested people, I think, that have. A stake in this, um, and a mix of people that are directly involved and people that might just have an interest in general.
Okay, in in terms of deciding between the two companies. I generally always side with you, Matt. Because. You're the guy that that's handling it. And so I I always want to go, well, it's important, that that group is important to Matt. Let's go with what Matt thinks. But I gotta say that I always listen to Julie Greenberg. And a lot of the things that I do, um, Julie is my go-to. And um, and I think if Julie and Ellen feel that, that these guys are better for it, I'd like to give that some strong consideration. I'm not saying that's it. But maybe I think we should consider that. So that's those, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I I mean, I. Yeah, I I I mean, I, as I said at the top, I I think that we have two good proposals. Um, you know, I I I enjoyed working with LIDC before. I I think that, you know, um. You know, I I I wouldn't have, I would have no problem if if we moved forward with them. Um, yeah, to me, uh, the 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 price was right with this one. And, you know, what sort of tipped tipped the scales a little bit in their favor was was pricing and um the prac- the prac- more practical experience that I saw from from them. Um. But, you know, that there's benefits to LIDC as well. Certainly.
Okay, um, thank you. Good discussion there. Uh, Robin, now we can close the loop with you. Right, yeah, I I should say I wanted to go last because I feel too close to LIDC to really be independent in my in my judgments. I wanted to hear it from everybody else first. It's it's why I I I'm doing what I'm doing. So I think what we'll get away in is the um experience of LIDC with our community. They know the community well. They know our watersheds very well indeed. Versus the greater experience of the other company in terms of actual practical interventions in in stormwater mitigation. Um. So that's, that's where the thinking is. Yeah, Kabir, in terms of, yeah, the project management, we have thought about it, and the idea was pretty much as Matt described, that a new committee will be formed. It will be tried. Obviously, the residents who are involved will be a critical part of that committee. But we want to recruit somebody like Julie, not necessarily Julie, who has got stormwater expertise also on the committee. And council is on, of course, and Matt has ever, needless to say. So. Um, all right, but that's it. You've got, we got away on the one hand, the knowledge of LIDC in our community against the greater experience of the other company uh with with stormwater mitigation projects. Um, and so I'll leave it at that.
Not to speak out of turn, but we could renegotiate with LIDC. If we felt they are strong for those reasons, go back to them. So look, we have this other proposal. Can you revisit your costs and your estimates here? So I know you can't speak on this, Robin, because you're biased, but maybe we're we're doing that.
But I think it's also, I mean, I I think that we should look and and compare and get, you know, their case studies from each of these groups and really look and see what they've actually done. Because like the stormwater management, you know, thing is that it's it's so hot, you know, no one knows, like, unfortunately, someone can't come in and say, okay, I think if you spend X amount of money, you're gonna get this result. And what we've seen is that our residents in town have spent tons of money and are still not seeing any results. And so I think that, you know, to look at people's, you know, body of work of what they've done and been successful at and um, you know, is gonna help us decide, you know, who we want going forward, like, you know, unlike um uh, you know, I I don't know that they're all, you know, I I think, I think if you, if you, if you ask ten different people, they will probably all have a a different um view on what the best course of action is. And so then what we have to do is really ask the results of what happened on these ten different people. And really kind of study what what's been successful and what's worked in these communities and what hasn't worked. And, you know, just judging by all of the different counties and townships that these people have worked in. I, you know, I I'm only reading their their press packet or whatever, but um, you know, it 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 sounds like they've worked in a lot of different areas and um, you know, that's what we really want because the side the side thing is, is that, you know, the people in the and the stormwater management, people that are tied into all of the civil engineers in our area all work within Montgomery County, and they all work with developers too. And it's a good um checks and balances to get people from outside of Montgomery County because they can get more money from developers. And so um you never really know that true answer. And so I think that the results is really what will speak for um, you know, what what these people have done and and kind of see their challenges that they've had and what they've done. I mean, in my view, it's it's hard to find people like, you know, it's not, it's not that easy to try to get um, you know, these groups to come in and come up with solutions. So um, you know, I think that their body of work speaks volumes in these cases.
Shannon, do you think we could bless Matt to make a call and maybe just update us on this Y email? Or or should we do another work session review on this?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it would be interesting, like, you know, the mayor said, you know, maybe, maybe we invite them in and we ask them or, you know, have them present to us on, you know, what, why, you know, what their each of their companies done, or, you know, and 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 we can ask them questions. Um, you know, I think that and, you know, I'm not, I I I know that there was some questions in terms of, you know, LIDC. There was a, there were questions about whether or not they were gonna kind of be recommending to Montgomery County and, you know, some other places about some infrastructural things that can be changed. And I don't know, you know, they didn't really do that. That wasn't part of the plan. Um, that ended up coming back to us after it all. And um, you know, there was a little, I mean, if we go back to the initial kind of conversation with LIDC and asking them, you know, what were they gonna provide for this money that we were gonna give them for their plan? Um, you know, it didn't necessarily, I think there was more hope upfront that it would include vaster and deeper um recommendations. And so, you know, I would like to kind of think about that as well.
I mean, we we could do that. Uh, Steve, maybe invite them to present to us at a council session. Might be good for residents to know about it as well. Maybe in the lead up of that, we can have sort of in writing affirmation that these fourteen households are aware and, you know, uh, which seems like it'd be easy to do. Um, that's where my mind goes. But I'm also happy to kind of bless Matt to take it forward. So, but I appreciate where Shannon is coming from.
Oh, you're on mute, Steve. Maybe I'm just, you know, in my God.
Well, Mike's just, it's taken us a long time to get to this point. And and Matt was only able to get two offers, two two responders to provide significant packages. Um. But I think it's perfectly reasonable and appropriate.
There weren't three, right?
To take a bit further, neither were the three, but um.
What's your view, Matt?
Well. Um. You know, I I I really do truly feel that that either would be fine, you know, so if if um you know, if we, if if we feel comfortable and the the committee folks liked the way that LIDC interacted with the residents, um, you know, if that, if if that's a determining factor and um puts them ahead, then um, I think, uh, you know, a- as Julie and Ellen suggested, I think one of the council member suggested we could try is say, you know, can you, can you try to come in closer to this other proposal? We we enjoyed working with you. We would like to continue it. Um. You know, the other, the other element is that I did ask um Bayland to look at our town stormwater code and to offer recommendations. And so um, you know, it perhaps there's value, as Councilmember Rovak was saying, you know, there there's value in getting multiple viewpoints. Um, you know, if if we, if we stick with LIDC for some of these shared infrastructure and planning out the the mapping and identifying areas within town and another company's perspective on code changes, we might consider ways that we can tweak our um review process, things like that, that we can we can sort of attack it on two different ends, and it might be worth having two different perspectives, looking at the two different ways we might do that.
That really resonates with me just at the highest level because of everything Shannon described, there's been a history of work here. This is hard. It's unclear if things actually add up. And then we are trying to do something innovative in how this is managed, this shared infrastructure concept. You know, and so I mean, you know, I appreciate like if if the intent is deliberately to have diverse inputs, then I think there's some value in prioritizing Bayland in in that line of thinking. So we have, we come at this from different angles. So that resonates with me for sure. Maybe, maybe immediate next step is just see if LIDC can come down. If they cannot reduce their costs, then this is a moot conversation at the end of the day. Um, you know, and then then we we know which way to go in terms of vendors.
It would there be in that circumstance, um, is there if it, are you looking to get this on the agenda in March? And if so, you know, is it if they can come down five thousand dollars, then, you know, we'll invite LIDC. And if not, then we go with Bayland or?
So it's double. LIDC is almost double.
I was just throwing, you know, whatever the number might be, but.
The delta is pretty sizable, so they would have to come down fair bit, given Bayland is reasonable and has these other experiences you highlighted. So, but I don't know what the other council thinks in terms of putting it on the agenda.
I'd like to pers- I'd like to proceed and get a contract signed as soon as possible. So I'd like to have this, have us able to vote on it in March. Now, whether it's in in my experience with contracting, which is in the government sector, um. But federal government may or may not apply here, is that we cannot go back to LIDC and say, you know, this is X number of dollars that we want to reduce things by. But we can't say we're looking for a best and final offer.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And we can go, and we can do the same with Bayview and say, you know, we're interested in more community engagement. Can you, best and final offer, what can you do in terms of addressing that concern? And we can see if we can get some inputs from both before the March meeting, which is pretty tight, but we're just talking about a perhaps a minor adjustment.
Yeah, we could, would actually, we could give feedback to both of them. One, we could say that to LIDC that your costs were surprisingly high. Um, please give us a best and final offer and what you think you can do for the lowest price. Or Bayland, we can say we're not, we're a bit concerned about your lack of engagement with residents. There's nothing clear about how you're going to engage with residents. So for your best and final offer, could you do that? Engagement and see.
And then, and then Steve, should we bring them to the council? Then we put it on the docket if we have, I mean, we we're inviting them, right?
So we could, we could invite both of them.
Um, oh, I see. Okay, I see. I I I understand what you're saying. So either the we, there's some resolution between now and the next meeting, and there's one proposal for us to vote on, or Matt still has open questions and we deliberate live on a council.
Right. In general, I think what the mayor is getting at is it's what we've typically done is once we've narrowed it down to a single vendor, we invite that one vendor in to sort of intro and address, address questions about how we'll actually proceed, but we could make it part of the selection process. I I'm ju- I am concerned, though, that that will frighten things out further.
My only request is to also have a view on project management and a view on the household engagement, Matt, when you come. So even if it's not fully cooked, but that you you're appreciating this and thinking through it and telling us what the challenges are what we need to address.
Okay. Okay, um, great discussion.
Um, oh, just one thing for Bayland too. Um, and I don't know, maybe they had said this, but um, you know, do they have any um you know, one of the things that we want to try to do with, you know, this work is also help influence, um, you know, our county codes as well. And do they have any um you know, success in the different counties that they've worked with, with helping to um, you know, influence change at a county level? I mean, Montgomery County is a lot bigger, but um, but, you know, that might be something that that they do have some some history with or not, you know. I don't, I know there's a lot, there's a huge project or I I don't know what the status is in Alexandria um about their streets flooding and um and lobbying um the county to to put in more infrastructure for them as well. Um, because our county's infrastructure is very old in this area. And um, and so that that would be a side benefit.
Oh, okay. I just want to say something. And I, and I want to get the town attorney's advice. I'm not sure that we want to have both.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Both of the um potential contractors there. I mean, it could be that you have the one that after Matt uh takes into account all of your uh concerns and then Matt makes the recommendation, they they're there, and then it's an up or down vote. But I I think and 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 I'm sure the town attorney can give us that experience. I don't, I don't think you want the two potential contractors there and then get get into a big mess. Okay, Mr. Tenor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor. This is a issue that comes up now and then. The Open Meetings Act provides that contracting is quasi legislative and is actually subject to the act's open meeting requirements. So if you do have a quorum of the council present with a contractor discussing their bid, it's actually an open meeting, but I mean, you don't have to invite both contractors to the same meeting.
It would, perhaps we could agree that if Matt gets best and final offers from both of them on the, with the answers to the questions asked about them, then he could perhaps make a decision at that point.
There also just might be more value in having Bayland there to answer questions and, you know, if if I don't get sufficient answers for some of the things that you've brought up, you know, then that that might help inform our decision. But then also, if the council doesn't get, you know.
Uh, I mean, if if you don't have a clear signal when you've got the two offers back, bring it back to us, then yes, hopefully you have a clear signal.
I just think you should avoid having both of them there at the same time. And and I think that if if Matt doesn't get the questions answered, you could invite one to a future meeting, a work session. But I think if it's the final decision, it should be the town manager's recommendation and then an up or down vote. And then you would also have then you'd have the opportunity for the, if the public disagrees with the recommendation, the public could comment and then the council could take that into consideration.
That's all. I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate the extra feedback. This will feedback, uh, Ron and Mr. Mayor.
But I do like the way you are. This will be the first time that it will be a very professional process that comes to the decision. So I want to applaud all of you.
Well, we are, and with Matt's assistance, we are trying to improve the procurement process. In this case, we're procuring services. And I think we can, just to walk back a moment in the agenda, we can apply this approach to several of these agenda items where um, we've provided some feedback, we've had some discussions. Um, Mayor and I can work with it with with Matt and see if Matt can probe those questions, fine tune his recommendation, then we can do an up and down vote on his recommendations at the next meeting.
And then you, and then you publicize it, and then the interested parties, such as the committees or anything else, they will come and and make comments and then and those can be taken. And then and those can be taken into consideration. When the.
Perfect, thank you. Great, great discussion. Plan ahead. Let's move on to the next item, solar panel R F P. Matt can give us an update there.
Yep, uh, with this, uh, we ended up getting two um proposals. Um. I have talked with both. One of them was willing to come and meet at the town hall. The other um. Has a policy where they they don't do site visits until the contract is approved. Um. I I recommended the celestial uh solar, um. I know that it was, I. They promised less, but I think that they were the ones that came and actually looked at our site, and I think that it was much more. Realistic, um, you know, they. We went over to the pool house and, you know, they. They had the conversation with us about. You know, the trees and how important the trees are to the community and how we're not. We're not necessarily looking to. Do severe trimming or removal of healthy trees. Um, to put in solar panels, especially when it comes to. The town pool um or the town hall. Um, I also thought that. The uh. The proposal, um. Uh. The proposal from um. Solar energy. Services. Um. Was it it in it included things like uh ground panels in the lawn at the town hall, which. We use that space so much and I, you know, I've I've asked them to. To update, I asked them to update it without that and and they did, um. But I. This one was more just I I felt better about the working relationship with celestial and coming here and. Talking through what we wanted it to look like. And. Uh, the the guy that I met with was was really knowledgeable, he's he's local, um. He he made it seem like it was going to be very easy to work with him and. He would, he would be able, we would essentially be able to. Power about sixty percent of the town hall with solar panels. Um, for a cost that was. Far, far less than what the the end of the other one was talking about, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for. Panels that. On the town hall, next to the town hall. At the pool house, and that's not even. Counting tree removal and tree trimming, things like that, whereas. The other one, you know, they talked about some minor tree trimming. Behind the town hall, but probably not any tree removal. It just seemed like. Coming to the town hall, talking with us, seeing what it actually looks like, understanding what the values are in town in terms of balancing. Trees with solar, solar panels, um. And what we could realistically expect from a completed project. Um, made me feel. Made me feel better about moving forward with celestial.
Great, thank you, Matt. Thanks for that update. Um, I like your, really appreciate your summary there and I have no questions. Let's go around in the regular order this time, unless. There any questions or issues otherwise. Uh, so Robin, do you have comments, questions?
Yeah, good, good. I agree with your recommendation for celestial is my bottom line, but let me get there. First of all, I I think celestial only is putting panels on the town hall, whereas. Uh, the other folks are putting panels everywhere, including the pool roof as well as the ground and. I don't know, they put it on the tennis courts, I wasn't too sure, but in any case. Um, I, they they lost me when they said we're gonna have to trim a lot of trees in order to get the pool house, um, enough sun and that that. No, they hadn't got the message. So no to them and yes to celestial.
Thank you, Robin. Go to Debbie.
One of the things that struck struck me in terms of, you know, the idea about trimming trees to put up solo panels. Once we do that. Then every town resident who has too many trees covering. Their roofs, who would like panels, then we'd have to let them do it too. And um. So I I would be very wary about about trimming trees and I'm glad we're looking. You're you're favoring the other proposal. I also think that. Having a company not come out and look at the area is ridiculous. You know, how can you even? You know, know that it's right, they didn't come out and look at the area. When we put up our solar panels, we had several companies out here. Giving us, you know, telling us what to do, so. You know, I'm all for solar panels and. And this time, Matt, you pick the purse, you pick the company.
All right, um, Shannon. You have any? Comments to add?
Yeah, I I agree with Aaron.
Great, thank you. Kabir.
I'm always in favor of the irregular order, Steve, whenever you we get around to that. Um. Matt, I'm confused, this whole pursuit and what we budgeted for was for two locations, town hall and the pool. We have two proposals. One of them only proposes to do this at the town hall. And while it is stronger on other dimensions. And for example, Debbie's point that they actually did a site visit. I'm just wondering what about the pool piece of our our project?
Well. Yeah, I mean, I I could ask them to to come back and give us a proposal for it. I frankly just felt like it wasn't. It wasn't worth it, you know, they they, he said. The amount of tree coverage there, we would require significant. Tree trimming, um, and that we wouldn't. Absent that, that. We would never recover. Uh, a significant portion of any any funds that we were spending for it.
Yeah.
Um.
Matt, could I just add to that? The the solar energy services people actually. Showed the percentage of the electricity used that could be recovered at the town hall if they threw in everything there and I with their system. We would actually manage to recover a hundred and fourteen percent of the stuff used. That's because we're putting panels on the ground everywhere else. Um, but at the pool, even with the tree trimming they're talking about, we'd only get sixty four percent of the energy used. In other words. The pool is just not going to generate the electricity. Even with trees trimmed that the town hall can do. So. If you add to the fact that we don't want to trim the trees, Paul has just is not a good place to put solar panels.
I I I asked them to look, you know, he he went, we went and looked at the pool, he he also looked at the um. At the garage behind the town hall, um, and to be honest, that was, that's part of. Why I'm recommending them is because I I. I trust that he's being honest about what is feasible and what's realistic. And what would give us, you know, a good. A good solution. Um, he wasn't. He wasn't a a B S artist that was coming here and and saying, well, if we put up these, you know? We can do trimming and recover fifteen percent of your electrical bill at the pool. You know, and talking to me and talking about how. He, part of what he wanted to understand was what what did we, why were we doing the project in the first place? And I I sort of explained, well, of course, there's a monetary. Benefit to it. Number two, there's um, the the fact that we are contributing to the use of non greenhouse gases for for energy. But number three is. That we want to signal that this is an important issue to residents townwide, and I I I felt that. By. By taking out the amount of trees that would make this project worthwhile in any in any meaningful way. Detracted so much from the the benefits of it that, you know, the juice just wasn't worth the squeeze.
This, this is, I'm very confused. The celestial folks. Believe that to get benefit, you would have to trim trees. Or the other firm.
Both of them, both of them agree.
I see, okay, that's where I was getting turned around, yeah. So both firms believe that you have to trim trees at the pool, which we can assume is reasonable, given a lot of trees there. And um, so both of them said that. I think that that's what I was getting turned around on.
Oh, sorry.
Because you were talking about one farm. Do it, having a lot of problems and and then also saying they will trim trees at the pool. I just wanted to get clarity that technically it's hard to do it at the pool and both firms have validated that.
Yes, that's right. Yes, I'm sorry, sorry for misunderstanding, but that's right. Yes, good summary.
Perfect, no, that's good. I just wanted to clarify.
But just to, so I'm clear, then the the celestial would be um, just on the town hall roof.
That's what they ended up landing on is that this is what we can do just on the town hall roof. This is what it would cost. This is what you would get from that. Um, the other things. In talking with them. I I agreed, they they. They recommended that they not even submit anything for the pool because it just wasn't worth it.
Got it, got it. And so, but but there's no, like the tennis courts that the other group had submitted for, that's all out.
The tennis courts, yeah, we had talked about the area in front of the tennis courts, that's out, the town hall lawn. In celestial is out, theirs is just pretty cut and dry. Put it on both sides of the of the roof, you know, he talked about. Our town hall is not facing in the right direction, that's optimal for solar for um. For solar uh electricity, but um. Again, that's that's kind of what I liked about. In in talking with them is, you know, we're going to work directly with the owner, it's a local company, he's honest about what the challenges are and what we can really expect to gain from it. And so from this, it would just be just at the town hall.
Got it, okay, sounds good.
All right, great discussion, thank you. I think we'll be ready to. Proceed to vote on that at the next council meeting. And that brings us to the next item. Declaration of inclusion.
Yeah, pretty straightforward, um. A few months ago, the Equity Inclusion Committee. Um. I had, uh, I had noticed in my my, the town where I grew up in, on their website, they had uh. A statement kind of prominently. Uh, posted there that. Essentially said, you know, they they. They are welcoming of people of all backgrounds and don't discriminate um. Based on, you know. Any, any discriminatory practices. And I I sort of forwarded it to the Equity Inclusion Committee and and said, you know, this might be something that. We might. Be interested in, especially with a new website, just to affirm that. We're a community that's welcoming of of people from all kinds of backgrounds, and it seemed to fit in with some of the broader discussions that. We were having, that the committee was having, that the history and archives committee was having, et cetera. Um, and they had toyed around with, um. Kind of collaborating with the environment committee. To do a joint statement that. Affirms, um. You know. Non hate towards all people, but also affirming. Our uh environmental consciousness. And. Ultimately, it kind of got a little bit convoluted, I think, and so they pulled back and decided, I think these are two separate issues that we'd like to tackle separately. And so they landed on this uh. Declaration that I included for the council and they just wanted. Um, they wanted the council to take a look at it and essentially give. Um, give their approval so that we can prominently display this um. On our website and think about other. Other uh. Uh, publications and things like that that we might um. Use this statement to affirm these values.
Tonight is to decide whether it's to move forward.
Right, yes, yes, right.
And then. But I mean, it's the appropriate time to ask questions on the use and everything else.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. Sorry, I stepped out just for a moment, but. I I I think the the declaration is is awesome. I appreciate the work folks have put on to prepare it. Um. Is this something that we would actually present as like a? Proposal? Or, I mean, wh- what what's what's the form does this? Declaration take, or is it just that that statement?
Well, I think number one is, well. Let me take a step back, I think, and and maybe Bron can can clarify, but. You know, we could, we could do a resolution with a proclamation, um. And then the idea practically is they they wanted to be able to use this for town publications and post it on the town website.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ron, can you add anything just to clarify? Is is that correct? So we we could do a declaration or proclamation? And then it'd be sort of official and it can be used as appropriate.
Sure, yeah, that that's right. And typically how it's been done in the past, there's a, you know, write up of a resolution or proclamation, but. Those can be adopted on the spot, they don't need to be. Carried over for, and the ceremonial ones can be adopted on the spot.
Perfect, thank you very much, Ron. Go for the questions, we'll go in reverse order. Kabir.
Um. I think it's great to do do this and obviously makes a lot of sense. I just want us to realize. This is not a path to absolution of historic sins and or. Existing lack of diversity in our town, so if if this is somehow going to. You know, save us from criticisms that we continue to face. Uh, I don't believe we will achieve that, but. It's a very positive thing. And I think we should do it, and I'm glad it's happening. And I particularly like that we are inclusive on age. So that was an important thing I just I noticed there.
Um, thank you, and I concur with you on all your points there, here. Um, Shannon.
Um, yeah, I I agree. I think that this is. Is great and um. Yeah, great.
Okay, great, um. Debbie?
We should all follow Shannon's lead and do one word. Let's do that at the next working session, one word input. I want to achieve that, that would be a miracle.
I I want you to lead us on that, Kabir, and show us how to do it, okay?
I'm the most long-winded person on the planet, so that's never gonna happen.
I didn't say that, you did.
My kids say that.
Anyway, I'm good with it, okay?
All right, thank you, Debbie.
Yeah, I mean, this went through quite a bit of discussion, the Equity Inclusion Committee, and I really do like the final form of it, uh, very happy with it, so yes. I too recommend that it go forward to us to vote for it as a resolution.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that brings us to the next item, which is. Ah, this might have a bit more discussion, Little Falls Parkway.
Any chance, may I request to the group, could we do street lights before that? Is that possible to talk through the street lights?
That's for sure, sure.
Okay.
Streetlight update, so. Uh. Matt, can you give us an update on where we stand?
Yeah, sure. So we have an application that's been accepted by Pepco, um. It's been approved. Um, so uh, we actually met with them today in town. Um. The first step, and I I sent them. Um, some updated things today, the first step that they're going to do, I don't have a timeline yet on this, but. First step is we're gonna get four. Pilot lights set up, basically so that we can, we can set up. We we have two choices for straightaways and two choices for um. Intersections. And so within the next couple, I I'm I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, they'll be able to secure those four lights. We're gonna put them up. Um, on Cumberland Avenue. And um. Then after, you know, a week of observation. Um, we'll confirm with them the procurement of. Those lights and so, um. I know we had talked about. Setting up the meeting to have them come in and talk to the council, um, so I I had also run that by. Uh, Alberto Zagata, who um, you know, he came to uh our meeting, maybe it was in in January, um. And. So um, I'll follow up with him this week, actually, because I think that the only thing that was holding us back there was. Just. Having that application finalized for them to be able to come in and answer. The only thing that was holding us back there was just having that application finalized for them to be able to come in and answer. Next step questions for the council and making an actually productive meeting, but. In essence, we're looking at, you know, within hopefully the next eight weeks or so. We can do our first installation in town and that'll be, that'll include Dorset Avenue. Um, and some of the streets um. Up uh up near Dorset. Um, and then eight weeks later, we'll do a second tranche and eight weeks later, we'll do a third tranche. I know there were some question about. Can we expedite that? Can we move it all at once? Um, those are some questions that. Pepco, I think we'll be able to answer when we do a meeting with Pepco for the council. Um, but the bottom line is that we are, we are moving forward with it. We have a pilot program that's scheduled to begin. And shortly thereafter, we'll we'll begin um installations throughout town for our new LED uh streetlights.
Great, thanks for that update, Matt. Um. And I see Shannon's hand is up and chin and I know we've been talking with the Public Safety Committee, so. If Shannon can can um leave the discussion for a moment, my system might be logging me off. If it does, I'll log back on as fast as I can.
So so one of the things that, you know, that's been very important for the Public Safety Committee is trying to be as involved within this process as they can be. And so um, you know, they have put together like a set of recommendations in terms of things that we should be kind of looking at and considering as far as like when we're. Going to be um, you know, getting these new streetlights. And one of the things that they had said. Um, you know, that really is that like kind of the forefront of the why, uh, you know, why are we doing this um new streetlight thing is that. Um, we really need lighting that would improve pedestrian safety. And one of the the ideas that they had heard about in another town, or I'm not sure where. Was that there could be a pilot opportunity to do lights that are lower. Um, under tree canopies instead of over the tree canopies because um, you know. That would really then highlight the sidewalk. And I don't know, have have you guys had any discussion as far as. How these lights would illuminate the sidewalks and where they're placed and um. Have have you had any of that with the Pepco meetings that you guys have had?
So. There's a couple of different. Uh, issues there. So number number one is that. We, uh, what we talked about first is working within the bounds of what. Basically, not 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 overshooting our shop, you know, at take taking it. Logical steps at a time, so. We do know that there are areas where we're missing poles, probably, where it would make sense to add in additional poles to improve street lighting. Um, where foot lighting could be um installed. But what we wanted to make sure we did first was to install the new. Streetlights that are energy efficient, that are better lighting in general, that are able to be directed in a better way. Um, that don't just scatter light like the high-pressure sodium mercury vapor lights do. Um, I know that the committee submitted our request for foot lighting for next year. Um, you know, and that I I don't. The way that this project is going to work is they they're they're essentially replacing the lights themselves. They're not changing the brackets. They're not changing. Any, they're not changing the location of streetlights. So that's kind of our first step is to.
So but with the um, you know, are there like the specifications, like do we have the light bulb specifications that we can? Kind of analyze and look at. I know there's two choices that you had said. Um, but just what those are and how do they relate? Because Friendship Heights has just recently um changed their lighting. I think that there was a project in the upper northwest that had changed some of their lighting. There's different things that, you know, if some of the lights um. The quality in the light directly affect health and safety, for example, lights that are too bright that might produce too much glare can actually blind drivers or make it harder to get a description of a fleeing criminal. I know that there's some talk about um, you know, how some of these lights do affect wildlife and um, you know, the glare that they have on our. Our natural animals that are in our area. So do we have like the specifications that we can provide to the Public Safety Committee and also perhaps the Environmental Committee if they're so interested? Um, to see like what these choices are of these lights that we have?
Sure, and that's also part of the point of the pilot as well to to.
But like, maybe if we can do even before the pilot, just to have like, these are like our choices, these are what the specifications are.
Well, I I would caution us from, I would caution us from taking a step back and and. Do and completely democratizing the project because that that becomes.
Can I jump in very quickly? We, I think I think we can, we can thread this needle. Um, Shannon, at the highest level, I I'm pretty confident and Robin can be in as well that these LED lights. Will improve visibility. In the direction of what public safety wants to achieve in terms of public safety outcomes. I think that in terms of whether this is some negative impact on natural life. In the town, I think that is something we can answer. Like the priority was to sort of in the best way possible, improve visibility. In in town. And so I I'm quite confident it will meet the public safety elements. The thing that Matt was getting at, just very quickly. That there's another related issue, which is that all we're doing is replacing current bulbs.
Right.
There is dark spots where there are no towers, there are no poles. That's a separate issue. So it has taken Matt like.
That's on my list, too.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that ju- just to sort of remind us that it's a multi-month effort to just get these bulbs updated. And where we will get.
It's a holistic approach to, you know, we've don't, we we've given, you know, at $235,000 to this new project, and we want to make sure that. You know, the Public Safety Committee wants to be sure that what we're going to be putting in isn't just going to be a marginal improvement because they're actually just a little bit brighter. If the problem is.
It won't be the end game, is what I'm saying. It's not the end game. It's the it's a step.
There are several things to say here. First is that um. It's a bit like Henry Ford, uh, when Model T Ford was sold, you can have any color as long as it's black. Um, in this case, we can have any Kelvin unit as long as it's 3000 K, because that's the only one they're offering.
I I don't, wait, I'm sorry, I didn't.
3000 Kelvin is a soft white light.
There's just one.
We'd have in a living room, uh, for example, as opposed to bright white light, which would happen in a bathroom. Uh, which is a 4000 Kelvin uh one. Uh, the wattage, we are actually, that's what the pilot is about, the wattage, which is how much power is in the light. Um, and. We're looking at two levels for along the street and two levels for the intersection and deciding which one is better and residents can come and comment and react to that. In terms of LED light versus it mercury, you know, HPS light or 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 mercury. HPS and mercury scatter their light all over, so you're lucky, you know, that that light, some light comes through the tree and lands on the street. It's a miracle that it does. LED lights are directed downwards, so all of their light goes downwards. Which means that you will get much stronger light coming through the tree canopy canopy from the LED light, so you will get brighter light. Having said all that, we have em- places in town where there are no poles, we have empty poles in the town, there will still be dark spots in the town when the LED lights go in place. That's kind of our phase two. What do we do with those dark spots? But let's see what the LED lights do first, and then we look at the dark spots that are left.
Well, I mean, without your respect, we've had this conversation multiple times where we've talked about the Public Safety Committee wanting to be involved with this process. And, you know, we've got, there are different choices of light bulbs, and if Pepco is only saying there's only one that's available to us, you know, there were other ones that were. Turned down by Northwest DC and, you know, I don't have all the specifications. It's something that I know the Public Safety Committee does.
The only, the only way we can get other light bulbs is if we buy our own. And that's a complex process, which is currently under a law that does not work very well. Um, there is an attempt at the moment in the state to change the law. Uh, to make it easier for for communities to buy their own lights, but that's no idea whether that law is going to pass for a start.
Okay, well, then can we just start by getting like the spec sheet of what is being proposed and what, you know, giving some of the details?
Hundred percent. That's that's what I was saying earlier. I think the Public Safety Committee should be involved and can be involved. And the way to be involved, Matt, is to inform them of what is going to be trialed. And I would do that for sure. I I don't think that.
Do we have that, something that we could do, like a takeaway? And then um, you know, so.
Matt, that doesn't mean it's a Democrat. I think you were worried that it would set the clock back, given everything you've done to get.
Yeah, no, I'm 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 happy to share anything. I mean, that's part of the reason we have these discussions is to share our progress.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, because like a- as of January, it was like a project, the progress was really stalled and it was almost like. Kind of, you know, once that guy came back in to kind of reengage, it sounds like it's gone very fast in the past month. And so, you know, the Public Safety Committee. Just really wants to be involved and, you know, they want to make sure that um, you know, at the end of the day, like. Our goal for spending this money is to improve our safety, improve for industry and safety. And is that going to be accomplished? And are there other, you know, under the canopy lights that we can also look at? Maybe that's something that we can look to see if we need to add. New poles around town and like maybe we could do a project for that, or, you know, they were suggesting the project maybe between Wisconsin and um. Deal on Dorset because it's so dark there um, and see how those lights kind of change that. The other thing um that they want to make sure of is that um. That we are not. That there's a transparent process to evaluate the need for surveillance technology and that no surveillance technology will be going up on these lights.
I'm not sure where that came from.
Surveillance technology is on these lights, correct.
I I'm just, I I am the liaison for the public.
No, I know, I'm I'm just saying I have no idea where that came from.
Expressing their their concerns and they said um that. Then we should just, if the council, like as part of the spec sheet, if you guys can just put into writing or Pepco can put into writing that there's no surveillance technology. And no potential for such technology that would be included in the lighting system.
Like surveillance.
It doesn't sound like that's a big deal, so you guys could just do that.
Matt and Matt and I were showing the the actual um. Unit that's going to go in and it's a flat unit with a bulb in it. There's nothing else in it. That's it.
Well, that's fine, then just get a something in writing. It's all they're asking for. It's not going to, it's not too hard. I mean, share a spec sheet. Get some stuff in writing and not have it be like, it seems very, you know, we get these dates.
In Matt's defense, we've been, you know, pushing him to act speedily on this.
I know, but we've also been pushing to be engaged in the process and so that.
We're all hearing about it now. This is the update. We just got it, you know.
Right, so I'm updating as well of how we want to be involved. I mean, you know, so. Um, I don't know, Kumar is raising his hand. I don't know if he wants to.
Can I just say something about the whole thing about surveillance? It sounds like a little bit like a um conspiracy theory to me. You know.
Lucky, I have to admit.
You know, and I think asking Matt or or um Pepco to say there is no surveillance. Is 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 inappropriate, you know? I think if if Matt tells us and and Robin, and Robin seems to know all about this too, about the bulbs.
Look, we live in a, we live in a time where people distrust government and so the more transparent that we can be.
Let me, let me um just put a pause here. This is, this is a great discussion, but. Um, I think that all along. That there has been the need for the council to be able to cross-examine Pepco. And the town manager said, so I guess Councilor Bar and the town manager met with Pepco today. To go over to some preliminary stuff before anything's going to happen. There needs to be a meeting between the council and Pepco. To go over this final proposal and all of these outstanding questions that you have need to be answered. We're not going to get the answers tonight because we need Pepco to get the answers. So so Matt. How quickly can this meeting? So the gentleman that came to our session is the government affairs person. He's not the operational. So we had requested that there be a meeting with the operations people because a lot of the questions you're asking are operational. So Matt, how quickly can this meeting be scheduled?
I can, excuse me, um, I can reach out to them tomorrow to try to schedule something.
Yeah, it needs to be, I think it's apparent that it needs to be scheduled as quickly as possible. We have been promising. You and I have been promising the council this for months now. So rather than, you know. Good, because I think Councilor Roback has some very good concerns that need to be raised, and they can only be raised with Pepco. So so rather than delay with this tonight because we have other agenda items, let's. Now we have an assurance from Matt that he's going to get this meeting as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I. May I say one thing, however, just.
I'll say one thing, too.
Fully respect Shannon's uh views there, but I just wanted to say thank you, Matt, for the progress on this. I think Shannon also thanks you for that. I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Oh, really? I I think, yeah, I think it's great progress. I think all the stuff, I just, you know.
I I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a conflict here. I think, I think it's just that. There are parallel processes that require us to meet with Pepco.
I I I'm not going to object to to meeting with the uh Pepco Public Affairs Representative one more time, but let me give some background. We have been trying to get LED lights in this town for 15 years.
Twenty.
All right, 20 years.
I think everybody understands. I think everybody understands that everybody agrees with that, but we we want to do it. With full public engagement and with all of these issues addressed, that's. Everybody, nobody, I don't think Councilor Roback is opposed to the, she she's wanted all the, everybody wants these lights yesterday. This has been going on.
Streetlights.
For a long time, so.
Agreed, let's move on. Glad you're back.
Yeah.
Okay, great discussion. I'm afraid I see Kumar, this one, his hand is up. I just don't think we have time. We have 10 minutes left in the meeting. We still have some chapter guidance. So we'll ask Shannon to.
I'll give him, I'll I'll call him also.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so then now we can move to Little Falls Parkway. You know what? Because that might get extended. I'd like to to tackle the election update. That should be short and quick.
Well, I can get, well, I think I'm the point person on both, so, and I don't think Little Falls is going to take, because I I know we want to finish by 7:30. So so as you all know, thanks to the efforts of Councilor Will Juwondo, there was a meeting, a public meeting on February 15th with the um. The Parks Department. And and I think there was a great deal from all of the different community groups that I've talked to, from Kenwood and Chippewa Chase West and everywhere else. There was a lot of frustration. With that meeting, the attitude that the Parks Department had was completely. As Naomi Spind grad termed it, autocratic. Because the 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 main concern all along has been that there needs to be a fully engaged public hearing process. And and the groups want to have as much data as possible so that they can make comments. Now, the way it stands now is the Planning Board is going to be having a hearing and making a decision in March. So at this point, our only hope is to get our council, county council member and at-large members. The way he they did with Thrive is to get them to weigh in here to get. The Planning Board to to delay this. Because other than that, we, you know, were at the whim of their decision-making process. And and Councilor Heller, you attended that, so you might want to add.
I actually had just gotten my. I actually had just gotten my COVID diagnosis and I was in a tizzy. So I didn't go to the meeting, but I listened to it and I was so unimpressed with what I heard. I just felt that it was the Parks Department manipulating data really and um not being, not really listening to people. It was very disappointed, disappointing. If this is how our government works, we're in trouble in general. And um I sure hope that they'll delay it. And so we can have real public engagement, cause right now we really haven't had it, both pro and con. And I know there are people, people on both sides of the issue. And it has to be heard.
I I attended that meeting also. Um and I know the Parks Department answered three hundred questions at the meeting. Um I know that they presented good data. I considered it solid data. Actually, it was not manipulated at all. And I was quite convinced that uh the Parkway on two lanes has in fact reduced the cut-through traffic to levels that um it had been prior to the pandemic. Um and we've went when both sides of the Parkway were open. So I did not feel like Jeffrey does that further delay is necessary.
Well, right, Councilor Barr, it's not me. It is all of the leadership of all the groups around us.
That's right.
I understand that Kenwood is hysterical.
It's not only Kenwood. It is not only Kenwood.
I, you know, you know what? One second. In all due respect, I know you think their da- data was solid and I know you're more of a numbers person than I am. But so their data was ridiculous and
How was that ridiculous?
The way they counted, I I I it would take too long to go on and talk about
There's no reason to debate this. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, but the fact of the matter is that that it's been scheduled for a decision. And all of you are welcome to weigh in with the planning board. But the fact of the matter is that most of the leadership of all of the community groups surrounding the Parkway are appalled at the process, the same way we all were with Thrive.
Just, I would, I would be willing to submit a joint letter from the council if we wanted to do that. Uh to to delay or to to um if we have some substantive feedback ideally, but even to delay. I think secondly, Robin, I think my view of the planning board and the Parks Department is is that they don't engage local governments effectively and local communities effectively. You know, they just don't do it. I think they may be technically sound, but they seem to somehow fall short on where things are most impactful. They just seem to fall short on that. I mean, it's not only local leadership we've heard from town residents, as you know. And so whether you are technically correct or or not, they've, they continue to have a misstep there. And so I, I think kind of pushing back on that is always a worthwhile cause for us, in my humble opinion.
They're not politicians. It's true. Um they are
Well, they do things that have material impact on our lives, material impact. So they need to be, they need to switch on somehow. That they can't hold arbitrary hearings and not expect people to fully absorb and appreciate what's really going on. So even if technically we can disagree procedurally, they always
Do you know that they had held a pre-meeting with the Kenwood folks that I uh before this meeting? So they they did reach out, actually.
No, our our county council
I was at that
Has shown no leadership. Our county council member has shown no leadership on this. Because it's all a matter of getting data and asking for a complete, for a full engaged public hearing process. And he and he hasn't, he hasn't done that. So he has failed us.
Well, I I'm 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 not impressed necessarily with Andrew Fritson, but there was an awful lot of data presented at that meeting.
Okay, let's, let's, I I I recommend if we can somehow join forces, always powerful as a council when we submit a joint note.
We are, we have joined forces. Um Kabir, we are, we are joined.
No, the ca- the council can take a position on this and send a letter.
Okay.
Right, that's what I mean, our our council. I would be in favor of that, but if that's hard to achieve, then I appreciate Jeffrey.
If 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 I can just interject for a moment, I thought that the, my understanding of the council's position or plan or vision here was um we had the results from the Transportation Committee survey. And we were waiting and the transportation committee wanted to conduct another survey with regards to Little Falls Parkway. And we wanted to, we we wanted to wait until after there was this February fifteenth Town Hall by the County Parks. Um so that's
That can be, I I think what Councilmember uh Kumar is talking about is just writing a letter to ask for a delay in the decision, to ask our council member to ask for a delay in the decision. Not to take a position, because I think that all of you wanted to wait and see was to survey our people before be before you take a position. But but they've already announced, they've already announced when they're, they announced at that autocratic hearing that they're, that they're making the decision in March.
So it's Though they're submitting to the planning board in March, it's the planning board that makes the decision.
In March?
Yeah. But it's, they don't make
That is not, that that does not give us enough time. And plus, we do not have the 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 groups did not find, didn't, are questioning the data, just like Councilmember Heller is talking about.
I I I was actually appalled by the kind of questioning that was going on off the data. It was unbelievable. Like, there was one woman who said I have never seen anybody on that park. Uh my only comment to her was, you should get glasses.
Well, you know, that that was it. Respect. I think you have to have respect for anybody's opinion on this.
Well, opinions and data, if she says she's never seen anybody in the park.
I would watch that language, Robin. I'm I'm not sure.
Because it's it's so empty. She might not, during the times that she goes by, she might not have seen
Going by that park, but the number of times I've seen people in the park is is frequent, you know. That, okay, lots of opinions, lots of emotions. I I would support a letter requesting a a delay, but I I personally am not ready to oppose plans to uh to put in the road diet.
Then let's uh let's put that on the agenda. Is that too late, Jeffrey, for next session? No, right? No.
No, if three of you want to put it on the agenda. But someone would need, I think someone would need to draft a letter that you can then debate and vote on. Or you, or everyone can write their own letter. Councilor Barr can write a letter. We can all write individual letters.
Let's, let's just have one letter to work from.
Right.
Uh do we have a volunteer to draft a letter for the council to send?
Why don't I start something, then everybody can edit it. This is not my forte, but let me just I think what you want in that letter is that we're asking them to delay their vote. Is that it? Is that what the essence of this, as it gets further study?
We'll be stronger if you say why you want them to delay.
I believe that I I believe that West Spring, that Springfield, Chevy Chase West and Kenwood, some citizens from those three communities are drafting a letter that you might want to take a look at.
Okay, I'll 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 figure that out. I'll deal with Pat Johnson. She'll be able to help me on that.
Thank you, Debbie. I have a quick related question, Steve. And I see a lot of residents on the call right now because I think they are all interested in this issue. I I don't know if, I haven't really engaged with residents. I know we got a couple of emails. At some point, it would be good to have a council discussion on the substantive issues. I think that would be important and to, you know, kind of flow in not our personal views, but what residents are
Well, I think that was the point of having a survey.
Yeah, right.
It just sounds like the time is short now, so we wouldn't be able to do that survey before the county
And that's part of the reason for the delay. I mean, we don't even have, you know, not all of these able to participate in what their views are.
Exactly.
Okay, and Council President Circo, on on the last issue, which is um uh from the Board of Elections on whether it will be in, uh what kind of election we will have in terms of um with the mail and the ballots. I talked to the Chair of the Board of Supervisors of Elections and they are gonna be making a recommendation. So that will come, so that will come to the um to the to the council.
I think they're meeting a week from yesterday, so.
Yeah, they're meeting. So then you'll be able to debate and discuss that.
Right. And am I correct, Mr. Mayor, that that the options are to proactively send out ballots to every voting citizen? Or to just make the mail-in ballots available? Somebody just
Yeah, if you make a request, whether they're gonna
And they'll be in person will be available too.
Yeah, in person will be available no matter what. But anyway, they they're gonna make a recommendation. They they felt that it was their part of their mission to make that recommendation.
Thank you. We covered a lot of ground. Thank you all for
I'm sorry, did you want to quickly, uh Jeffrey?
Yes, the other item was the um there has been a request that we proclaim, like many other towns and municipalities across the country to proclaim May is Jewish Heritage Month.
Please support.
And so, and so um a draft of the resolution will be um if you all agree to put it on the uh agenda for for uh for March.
I have, I have one more quick request, Steve. I know we're wrapping up. True to nature and being long-winded, I will delay us just a minute. Which is that Matt's after send a bunch of us an email about, and it's related to Little Falls, is on Dorset Avenue and traffic on Dorset Avenue. I'd like to have a discussion on that at our next booking session. This is not a new issue. It's a perennial issue, but I think maybe we can attempt to puzzle through that.
Well, well, that, we'll, we'll put that on the next, that that would be to discuss potential legislation. So
Yes.
Yes, we'll put that on. There wasn't time to put it on this month's
Next week, next time is fine. Thank you. Oh.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night. For all the residents who joined us for the meeting. Thank you.